Okay, it is seven oh one, time to call this meeting. Order, everyone please stay with the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the good heart for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Taylor completed his side of the prayer brief.
Dear God, tonight we ask for guidance in making the right choices for the city. We also pray for healing and comfort for those dealing with COVID, for safety and more, but in will. Whether, in Jesus's name, we pray.
Hold a little lamp.
Mr. Kline?
Here.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Ms. Jones?
Eric?
Eric Duffy?
Here.
Here.
Here. Motion to excuse Mr. Smith from the meeting. Second that.
Taylor?
No.
No, yes, Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Kline?
Yes. I'll do it.
I'm gonna do it.
If you've got COVID, you should be quarantined in your house in Nelsonville, on in Waterford.
Okay, we'll take it. All right, uh, everyone reviewed the minutes.
Your residence.
Everyone reviewed the minutes from the last regular meeting and the January ninth special, nineteenth special meeting? Have any, uh, council comment about, council discussion? Should approve. Seven.
Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Kline?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Okay, we're to the auditor treasure report, Mr. Uh, Mr. Sappington is sick today. So, we're gonna go ahead and skip that. That's how, yeah, that's how. So, um.
Nelsonville?
Yeah, yeah.
It's where Halfway Street, I believe, resides.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's us.
So, um, mayor's report, court report and roll call, um, don't have a report yet, but I can tell you this. Ninety-five percent of the people showed up last mayor's court, which was the highest, uh, that we've ever had, that I can remember. So, Jessica, in her actions as the mayor's court clerk, has done her job. She has put out arrest warrants for people who haven't paid their fines, um, and we've been collecting those. So, uh, needless to say, it was, uh, most of the, uh, tickets and stuff, uh, were trafficked. But there were some other ones mixed in there, so the police are definitely doing their job, so.
I think they come to see blood.
Yeah, I think. So. So, uh, we're to citizens comments. It's okay. Savannah?
Savannah?
The floor is yours.
All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Oh, that's fine, you can do it right there, you're fine.
All right, don't matter me.
Okay.
All right, so, nice to meet you guys, uh, my name's Savannah Henderson, and I am a second year Parks and Museum education student over here at Hawking College. I am also the president of the Hawking College Wildlife Club, and that is part of the reason why I'm coming to you guys today, talk to you guys. Our club is trying to find different ways to be able to get the community involved with some of the events at the college. I wanna figure out ways to get the college more involved with the community, because we know that there's a good partnership that we could have there, and it's a area where I think we could do a lot of improvement. So, as a wildlife club, we're going to try and make sure I do that this coming April. Our idea that we're going to pitch to you guys is to hold a Earth Day festival on April twenty-second and potentially April twenty-third. I say potentially, the dates are not set, because it's going to depend on your guys' approval for certain dates, the amount of help that we were able to get, the amount of funding that's available. And once again, the dates that you guys are, um, basically approving of, because it is going to be a street festival type, um, idea. The, um, idea behind it is that the Hawking College Wildlife Club and anybody who is working on campus or our students are going to be coming into Nelsonville on that Friday night, potentially Saturday, um, during the day, and holding different events for the community and celebration of Earth Day. So, the idea that we want to try and, uh, show the community is that, you know, the environment's important, um, that Earth Day is a really good time to be able to teach people about the environment. It allows our students an opportunity to engage with the community and to, uh, better utilize our degrees before we actually graduate. Um, it gives us some public engagement and allows us to teach others about what we're learning at the school. So, what I'm asking from you guys right now is basically for any comments, questions and concerns, and the possibility of something of that sort being able to happen. So, it's in the very early stages of planning right now, uh, once again, we have to, uh, check with you guys, obviously, because we would be using the city. There's a lot of paperwork and bureaucratic, uh, things that I don't know anything about, that I would need your guys' assistance on to be able to figure out how to be able to pull it off. But I have a lot of willing and able hands who are really interested in doing it, and I know that, like I said, it would be a really good opportunity for both the city and the college to be able to have a good partnership, to be able to just, I mean, just make, you know, the community a better place for food, uh, food science. So, if anybody has any, Mr. Sherman?
So, your, uh, your idea would be, like, in town, not on campus?
Yes. Yes, so we would want to come, so similar to Parade of the Hills, um, just to give you guys a little background, so I did say I'm a two-year student, um, but last year, the majority of the things that were held in Nelsonville were canceled. So, if there's anything that you guys have going on during that time, that you would wanna, like, bring up, that you think might be conflicting or anything like that, uh, or that might be similar, you can let me know, because like I said, this previous year that we're going, or the previous year and the year that we're moving into now, is really my first year having any sort of normalcy in the city. So, if you guys have any festivals similar to it or during around that time, then you can let me know, but it would be similar to the Parade of the Hills that you guys have in August. But it would be solely focused on, like, environmental, um, ideas and events and, you know, crafts for kids and family, um, events, things like that. So, we would wanna probably have it somewhere in the square, similar to Parade of the Hills. Uh, we wouldn't wanna have, um, at least at this point, um, any sort of parade really with it, because that would involve a lot more, um, street closures and planning, and that's not really anything that we're that, um, interested in. Plus, it is an environmental day, and I don't really know that, you know, people with the cars to the city don't make sense, so. And we wouldn't have any rides for pretty much the same reason, uh, we also wouldn't wanna have any, just because it wouldn't only be maybe a two-day, a less than two-day event. For Parade of the Hills, that makes sense, and it's a good moneymaker for them, I'm sure, but for us, it doesn't really fit with our, um, topic nor the timeline that we would have, so.
The only thing, uh, that you might wanna, I don't know who runs it, but it generally happens around the same time, like around Earth Day, is, um, Youth Vacation Day. And I don't know who actually is in charge of Youth Vacation Day.
Be real action by any chance?
We would have to look at our, uh, give us that game, look at the calendar and de-conflict anything, I just don't know if I'm ahead of.
Yeah, I know that that's good, the only thing that I thought potentially could conflict is the prom, but the prom is, you know, for children, the prom is scheduled at this time for April thirtieth, so that weekend would actually be okay. We're gonna.
You guys have meetings?
The Wildlife Club?
Yeah.
Yeah, we have meetings, um, every Wednesday, uh, nine-thirty in the morning, um.
Give me a call when you guys have a meeting, I'll move over. Check me up at your desk.
Sure. Okay, so was there, I mean, I'm open for anything else, other questions or suggestions or?
I'm just like, so like trying to arrange, like, so there's activities for kids to come and learn about, you know, climate change and the environment and?
Right, so we're gonna try and involve, um, the majority of our natural resource students, um, so you're gonna have degrees there such as wildlife management, Parks and Museum education, natural resource law enforcement. And then we have, like, you know, equine sciences and some of the, um, other subsidiaries that are a little bit smaller, but those are the main, like, three or four that we have. Those would also be the main three or four that we would want to actually have at the festival, we would more than likely be able to pretty much provide our own security for the reason that we have the law enforcement program. The Parks and Museum education, um, students are going to be the ones that, um, we should be able to do a lot of the public engagement events, because they're meant to be interpreters, they're meant to be the ones engaging with the public and doing a lot of the talk and speeches and things of that sort. The Wildlife Management, um, students, we would be able to probably set at a booth, um, with some of the actual, like, wildlife skulls, skins and pelts and things of that sort that we have at the college, um, to be able to educate the public on, like, wildlife specifically. Other than that, uh, we would, the base schedule right now would look something around, um, probably starting around three or four o'clock on Friday to allow some people who aren't either, aren't working on that day, or who get off work a little bit early, the chance to come before the crowd right after work comes. We would probably wanna have the event, um, open until nine or ten o'clock that night. Uh, one of the events that we would wanna have running, um, that night after the day's festivities, which I'll get back to in just a second, would be, um, the possibility for some type of Earth Day movie. So, we would wanna have something, um, either by, you know, Athena Cinemas or, um, I believe there's one, uh, Athens Cinema or Movies Ten, to be able to come out with a projector, we would have to get the licensure to use the movie, we were gonna make money off of it, but that's something we can look to in the future, but just playing some sort of family-friendly Disney movie more than likely, to where people would be able to gather, um, somewhere in the square, uh, possibly over by the library, if we were able to get a big enough sheet to cover the wall uh, or screen, and if we have enough seating, or where the stage was set up for Parade of the Hills, if we were able to set something up against that, uh, wall right there. So, during the day, at least on, uh, Friday, we would have, um, as many vendors as we would be able to, um, get to come to the event. We would be charging, since it's the first year that we would be able to do it, a low vendor booth fee, because we wanna try and encourage more people to come out, but we do have to set aside a little bit of money to cover the few expenses that we are expecting to have. The vendors that we're looking to target are going to be people who are, um, buying locally from other places to create the items that they're going to be selling. They're either, or they would be selling, you know, food that they are growing themselves, like farmers, anybody that goes to the farmer's market in Athens or the farmer's market here in Nelsonville. Or anybody that is making local products that want to get their products kind of out in the community, who are doing something environmentally friendly or sustainable or, you know, anything of that sort that fits in with that Earth Day ID, idea, would be people that we would wanna try and come, um, out to be vendors. So, we already have a list of over fifty people that we're going to try and contact and see if they would be willing to come out. I have no doubt in my mind that there's not going to be fifty people there more than likely, um, but I would like to start with a bigger pool, so that we can eventually, you know, bring in as many people as we can. So, the vendors would hopefully be open, we would ask them to obviously start setting up a couple of hours prior to, um, the event actually opening. Once the vendors are all set up, we would also be having, uh, potentially, like I said, um, a couple of tents out from the college to be able to do the education piece hands-on with the public. And we would also wanna have a couple more tables, uh, set up to do some either sustainable Earth Day crafts, some recycling crafts, or some type of project that kids, it's actually, they're basically actually getting taught about Earth Day instead of just making something to put on their fridge, so we wanna have a true educational piece behind Earth Day, like activities in themselves. The idea for Saturday, if we were to have it as well on Saturday, would be similar to the Friday night festivities, or if we only wanted to hold it on Friday, we could use Saturday as a rain date, because we all know that April is unpredictable in terms of the weather. So, that would be the, uh, plan for the next day, but like I said, if we wanted to hold today, we could do that. Um, the only reason that we really wanted to have it starting on Friday, um, at the very least, is because Friday is actually the technical day for Earth Day, so we wanted to try and start it on that day. If we did end up pursuing anything on a Saturday, because there are people that generally work on Saturdays, you're gonna have a higher population that's going to be off during the weekend. We would wanna have something in the morning, potentially like a type of five-k run, or like a bicycle event, something where shirts would be available for people to buy, uh, which would help to raise funds for Earth Day, um, incorporate Earth, uh, an Earth Day charity or anybody, you know, that we would have to decide at a later event or a later date, um, it would more than likely be someone who is benefiting the environment, like, in the community. But anything that we can do, you know, to get people out and about and actually outside and engaging, you know, in outdoor activities would be something that we would wanna do that morning, and then during the day would be similar to, um, the night on Friday.
So, you are, you're a second-year student?
Yep.
So, you're gonna be graduating?
Yes, sir.
And then are there folks in your, uh, organization that are gonna be hopefully taking the baton of you and, and passing it on as they graduate?
Uh, yeah, so hopefully, so, um, behind me is actually our treasurer, his name is Ethan York, and he is a first-year student in the same degree as I am, which is Parks and Museum Education. So, he will probably still be here, um, by the, uh, end of the year next year. Um, I also have several people, uh, like I wanna say probably ten or twenty people in the club who are still members, who are still first-year students, who they will also be here next year. I'm gonna be honest, I can't promise you the longevity of the event, because it is a two-year school, it's harder to have annual events when you can't see them out as long as you might be at a four, six or eight-year school. But, I would, the hope would be if we're able to make this a really good event for the community and for the college and for the club in of itself, and especially for the natural resource program, that even if there's someone not in the Wildlife Club who wants to pick it up next year, there's plenty of other natural resource people who I would hope would wanna pick it up. So, I think that would probably depend on the success of, um, of the actual event this year.
I would just encourage you not to judge it solely on this year's.
Right, yeah, we did.
Limited time, that from now until then, so.
We did actually have, I don't know if you guys would have heard about it, but we had the first annual Hawking College Haunt out at the college, um, right around Halloween. And we had a pretty good turnout for that, I believe it was between like about a hundred and two hundred people, which was impressive, especially because the weather was really bad that weekend. Um, and a lot of our homecoming festivities got moved, um, to a later date, which was supposed to bring more people into the college, and then it just ended up getting canceled. So, we will still be doing that next year, even though, um, the numbers weren't as high as we were hoping, but like I said, with the weather, it was kinda, you know, understandable. But the program managers for the college, at least the two people that we would be working, or the two or three people that we were working closest with in order to pull off the festival that are like, who would be the adults in, in charge, basically. They should be here for, I would hope, a long time. Pat's in his first year, he's the program manager for our, um, degree, and he doesn't plan on leaving anytime soon. Um, the program, or the manager of nature, of the Nature Center and Robin Scossing, which is part of the inter-program, um, he's been here for several years, and I know that the law enforcement instructor's been here for several years as well, so.
Samantha, I don't wanna interrupt you, but you can contact me.
Okay.
Schedule a date, and I'll help you with permitting.
Perfect, yeah.
Schedule the date, because I'm gonna talk about a couple events that we've already got scheduled to share on the calendar.
Yeah, that was one of the things, 'cause I actually was able to meet with the Parade of the Hills committee on, uh, Saturday, and I just, I, I didn't even know where to start with this, like, we literally campaigned with the idea like, less than a week ago, and so we were just trying to find some people to connect with and to try and figure out even how they pull that off, because I had not a clue where to start, so.
Sounds very promising.
Okay, so, what would be the next step that you would want us to go through, send you an email or a permit?
Yep.
Yeah, perfect.
Pick your date and meet with her and do from there, sounds like a great idea.
I appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you.
All right, do we have any more citizens comments?
Can you guys don't take her to the rest of the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, do whatever you say.
So, okay, well, we're moving on, business and organizational comments. Do we have anything?
The weather was a little bit better.
Uh, committee discussions, I will say that we're gonna have to call Parks and Rec Committee meeting. Uh, to discuss, uh, the, I wanna get on ahead of this, the summer league program.
Okay.
Who is retired, and also the junior high program has, uh, has approached me about possible funding. We gave them money a few years ago.
Okay.
I think it's something good to think about, so, uh, those are the only two things that I have. Anyone else have anything? I'd like, please inquire, direct you, please inquire. Okay.
Are you asking for money?
Yeah.
So, we might as well set up a.
Yeah, are the committees settled, 'cause I know, like, Cory had asked a question about.
Yeah, for right now, that's right, yes, yeah.
I can't do Tuesday night, that's, that's really, that's like my big thing right now.
This week and next two days.
I'm teaching again, so.
Teacher, teacher. God bless you. No, no way. So, we'll call, uh, Parks and Rec Committee meeting. I'll do with you guys, we'll do that scheduled, so that way, that's taken care of, 'cause we do definitely need to get ahead of that, the baseball program, so. Anyone else? Okay.
You are, you told me.
What's that? For right now, but we will need to do one pretty soon, um, but I'll get to that in my state manager report, I expect some, uh, maybe we'll get some traction on a few things this week and then have a follow-up meeting.
Here we have, please, set up the next two days.
That'd be fine, Wednesday would be fine for a Parks and Rec meeting.
Stack them all, Wednesday, that'd be good for you guys.
Yeah. And we also, yes.
Five minutes last.
Anybody's time, work, what time is everybody good with?
I'm good.
After six?
After six is fine.
Okay, just make a stack. Anybody's time, work, what time is everybody good with?
I'm good.
After six?
After six is fine.
Okay, just make a stack. Dan, do you have a missed lunch?
Catering?
Yeah, you're fine, okay.
Definitely, man.
Dan has missed the lunch for a long time, so.
You should know, you eat with.
All right, so, department updates, who do we have tonight?
Health enforcement.
Ms. Barber, Mrs. Barber, the floor is yours.
Thank you, um, there's a few things I wanna discuss tonight. I'll make it quick.
I'm in it.
They're all important.
Bye.
They're all very important.
Good enough.
So, I'm gonna start with the vacant building registration. In twenty-twenty-one, we had a hundred and twenty-two buildings that were vacant. October first of twenty-twenty-one, um, we went down drastically, down to ninety-seven buildings. Whether it be because the land bank is taking care of them, or folks are selling buildings and occupying buildings. So, the notices were sent out October first of twenty-twenty-one. I gave myself and gave the community ninety days to respond to those vacant building registrations. I got about a quarter of people that have responded, and I have three-quarters of people that haven't responded out of that number. Starting February first, penalties will be applied. I think it's an ample amount of time, and the code says it's over the amount of time that's recommended, so I gave people an extra sixty days. Um, I just wanna remind everyone, the community, that in addition to the penalties, which could be a pretty hefty, uh, penalty, 'cause we just passed it, the penalty shall be equal to one-half the current annual fee or eight hundred dollars, whichever's less. In addition to that, public notice and nuisance abatements can go into effect, meaning that if you're found guilty of a misdemeanor, so what I'll do is I'll, everyone that hasn't responded, I'll send out a citation. They'll come to court, if they're found guilty that they own the property and that they haven't registered, then at that point, they'll, they will be charged with a minor misdemeanor. And then every day after they've been found guilty, they can be charged with another violation. So, they can rack up a lot of fees, court costs, a lot of fines, a lot of money. So, all I wanna say to folks out there that own vacant buildings, if you're still alive, contact me tomorrow. Either by email, or you can drop by, whatever is convenient for you is fine for me. Second thing I wanted to talk about is our rental permits. Today, this, this year's been really slow for a lot of folks, and I really haven't had too many people contact me to, to let me know why. So, I'm gonna continue to the next phase. We had, when I first started working here three years ago, we had over eleven-hundred rentals. We have nine-hundred-and-seventy-six rentals now in the city. Various reasons, people are selling, they're remodeling, selling, and they're turning into family-owned homes. People are moving trailers out, so their trailers are getting dilapidated, and they've left them vacant too long, so then they have to, they have to remove those trailers, we've had a few of those. We've had people that just aren't getting out of the rental business, they're turning them into Airbnbs, that's the new thing. So, we're down to nine-hundred-and-seventy-six rentals as of twenty-twenty-two, and less than half of those have been registered. So, I only have four-hundred-and-eighty-eight registered, and the deadline's January thirty-first, okay? After February first, you can be penalized a hundred dollars per unit, not per building, if you have a three-building unit, or a three-unit building, that's three hundred dollars for a triplex. So, please, call me and tell me why you're, you may go over that date. I mean, I've got, I make room for people, I, I don't, I don't say, okay, this is how it is, there's exceptions, it depends on people's, uh, what their circumstances are in their life, so please get ahold of me, there's thirty dollars an annual fee per rental unit. So, I'm gonna say it again, a duplex is sixty dollars, not one building, is thirty, if there's a duplex, it's sixty bucks, so just a reminder. The young lady that had just been talking, um, she was talking about an event she wants to start up. I've got two major events that's contacted me. I think they're gonna be major, they'll probably be successful, Waylon and Wayne Event, which is the motorcycle club, will be coming back to Hawking, I spoke with him, um, today. He's still in the process of figuring out the timeframe and all the stuff with Hawking College, but so far, it's still gonna be over Hawking. It brought in tons and tons of bikes, lots of people staying in our town, lots of people that have lots of money that want to spend in our town. So, one of my goals is when he sets a time, I'm gonna send out an email to all the businesses and say, hey, this is a big weekend, I was at the event last year. There was a lot of people there wanting to eat, wanting to stay in our community and wanting to spend money in our community. How about staying open on Sunday, 'cause it is a Friday, Saturday, Sunday event, and they do come to the square and visit the square. We have another event, uh, that's been approved, and it's Tunnel to Towers event, which is May first, it's a five-k run. They're hoping to have, um, a sort of celebration afterwards, an award ceremony, we'll have lots of people coming into our town, wanting to rent your Airbnbs, your motels, eat your food at your restaurants, and buy your stuff that you have for sale. These folks run these events all over the United States, so we're gonna, we've already got people that are asking, where do I stay when I'm in Nelsonville? Where do I put my head down, where can I eat, what's fun things to do in Nelsonville? So, I think this year, I'm gonna try to work really hard communicating with Athens County Tourism. I'm gonna try to really hard communicate with you guys about what's happening, so you can get it out there. And I'm hoping to utilize our city webpage, which is not an advertising site, but I'd like to, if, if it's okay, I'd like to utilize our Facebook page to get this information out to the community.
I know that they've already set their date, that April twenty-ninth and thirtieth is OU commencement, it's graduate commencement and undergraduate commencement. I mean, I already know that, like, every hotel, most Airbnbs in this area are, that weekend, I don't just, you know, I know you said they're wondering where they're gonna stay, um, that weekend. The next weekend is Hawking College graduation, those are always just big weekends, um, but I think when people are trying to plan events, that they kinda need to look at our local college calendars, because there aren't enough hotel rooms, there aren't enough Airbnbs, you know, so, so many people, you know, every hotel in Logan will be both, and Parkers will be both for OU commencement as well, but just throwing that out there for them.
I will tell you, May first was decided by Leslie, because Jeff passed away at May second, so it was the anniversary, and she didn't wanna do it on a Saturday because of OU stuff, and her father-in-law plays a big part in all of that, so they chose a Sunday, early morning. One of my jobs, because I'm part of the committee, is to round up the church, in church, because twenty-ninth is Friday. Part of the event goes, part of the event goes past four churches, and so I need to get all the pastors together to say, hey, do you wanna sell bottled water outside your church? Would you like to start church a little later? Does anyone want to bring in drinks for these folks to, to, for them to buy, or do you wanna donate, or any of this, so there's a lot going on, but yeah, she chose May first on Sunday, because of the, the anniversary.
So, the only other thing I wanna do too is, um, I don't know, like, how they're, what they need to do to set up for that event on the square or whatever, but, uh, as it stands right now, I think April thirtieth is scheduled to be Nelsonville, or homecoming, or prom. You know, people like to go to the square to take pictures, so like, we wanna make sure that people still have access. Uh, you know, people like to go to the square to take pictures, so like we want to make sure that people still have access.
Yes, absolutely.
For prom.
I'm glad that you mentioned that, because I will mention that to Leslie, she will be here next council meeting. Uh, she's on the schedule to talk to all of you, um, so.
I know, I got an answer from Mr. Booth on the, the challenge, but I never heard from Mr. Dumphy if he was gonna accept the challenge of the five K. Of course, he had to walk towards, I have to have a brief, a break for him to walk back.
They need to.
I'll, I'll run it if they aren't doing a tight group.
Oh my God.
You know they probably are.
Yeah.
Not tight group, no, it's good.
Well, you know, so Mr. Dumphy, feel free to say, no, here, um.
Hey, Dan.
You better bring oxygen mixes.
Does that mean that you're, you're gonna be there? You said?
I will be there, and, um, I'll have doctors towing one standby.
Well, I'll make sure I get to the number one view room.
Oh my.
So I know how much I take my PowerPoint presentation, so I passed out a flyer instead. Um, I want to spend a couple of minutes on this topic. Uh, property owners in the city of Nelsonville received a friendly reminder last week from the code enforcement office to clear the snows from their sidewalk. We received overwhelming amount of feedback, most of the feedback was negative in content. It's normal.
There was out of towners too that don't live in Nelsonville that were.
Yeah, there was a lot of out of towners, and Becky, they love you.
Yeah. It's normal to send out reminders notifying property owners about city codes. I send them out all the time. I think everyone that is, that I email or that's on Facebook realizes that. Um.
Can I, can I stop you real quick?
Yes.
So I'll, I'll speak to this matter because I think it's important. You took a lot of backlash, in my opinion, on this. It, I think that not only, uh, was the content negative, that was, you know, the feedback negative, but it was also, I think, a lot of it was taken out of context. So, and I think that it's unfair, and I think that, uh, you're a reasonable individual in this community and, uh, pay attention of your surroundings and pay attention to your neighborhood and your community. I, I think, I think you know, um, so I'm a little disappointed in, in, uh, you know, some of the, you know, comments. Especially, you know, people from out of town don't, they don't know, they just, they may have known someone who commented in there, therefore, you know, just took it as gospel. But, uh, I think you're doing an excellent job, I don't want you to think that this is, um, I think you handled it appropriately. I think, you know, it's a concern for all of us, um, the safety of, you know, I personally have a situation too, where I'm, I'm dealing with a tenant right now, trying to get their, or they have to clean their stuff up. But, uh, I think it's just important that people realize that we are trying to do this to better the community. Not, not to scold anybody, not to, you know, yell at anyone. We all know, we're not trying to alienate anyone who's incapable or unable. It's, uh, it's actually the opposite. And if you took it as such, I'm disappointed, and I think they should be ashamed, so. That's, that's, I just wanted to share that, I don't comment usually on Facebook, because you can't win in those types of battles, so, um, but I, I just wanted to share that, I think, I think you did an excellent job.
Yes, I mean, the amount of people that have been walking down East Canal Street, it's been alarming, and it is, it is dangerous.
Same with that street.
And I, and I'm, yeah, and I'm watching these people walk down Canal Street, and I'm like, oh, this is gonna get hit. And I mean, thank God no one has.
Well, and that's why it was important for me to read, so that anyone that goes to YouTube can listen to this, whether it be elder folks or even the younger population, because when I seen all the comments, I seen the majority of comments from the younger population. I seen a lot of nineteen, twenty-year-olds making comments, and I'm like, come on, guys, what's up? That, that generation, so, thank you, I appreciate it from both of you. Um, so it's normal to send out reminders notifying property owners about city code, and they educate those that are now aware of city code, that are, it's supposed to have been not aware of city code. Think of it as a reminder to individuals that know the law and awareness to those that don't. That's, that's what I wanted to put out there. I, we put the laws and the language so that people are aware and are educated of our laws. Because I get a lot of phone calls of people saying, I can't find city code, where city, where's city code? Well, that, this is a good opportunity for me to educate the community that aren't aware of the laws. And, and I just want to say that we appreciate those citizens that have cleaned their sidewalks. I'm sure the citizens and your mail delivery personnel walking on the ice and snow appreciate it as well. And then I'm gonna go to the city code. It's the responsibility of the owner occupant to remove snow and ice off of his or her sidewalk. Removing snow or ice accumulation within a reasonable time, which will ordinarily not exceed twelve hours after any storm that causes accumulation. A reasonable time. If you're at work and you don't get home for fourteen hours, when you get home, you get something to eat, you relax, change your clothes, fifteen hours is a reasonable time. Whatever's reasonable, not two or three days, that's not reasonable. Uh, if a complaint is filed and it's valid, a violation notice will be issued to the owner. If violations exist, a violation notice is issued, and the property owner is given time to make corrections. So they get a notice from me, or I stalk and talk to them, and then they can remedy it. If they don't, then we have to proceed the legal proceedings. Um, and whoever violates it is in violation of a minor misdemeanor. And if they get another violation, it's a misdemeanor of the fourth degree, which just makes that fine go up higher. And if you don't pay it, you can lose your license, you could, we can post jail time, it's all kinds of silly stuff, just because you are mad at the city. Um, Ohio revised code seven-two-three-point-zero-one-one authorizes the city of Nelsonville to require property owners to remove snow and ice from abutting or adjoining sidewalks in a timely, timely manner. So what the city done, done, is they adopted an ordinance through the city code saying, those streets are your responsibility to clean, to fix, if there's a tree limb, to clean the tree limb. So we adopted that from the, from the state code, the city code. So, so that keeps liability for us out of it, that's what that does. So what does it mean? A property owner is, is responsible for keeping his or her property safe. If a postal worker, delivery worker, or visitor falls because you didn't shovel and salt your driveway, you could be responsible for covering that person's injuries. Am I liable if I shovel my sidewalk and it freezes again, then someone falls? The Ohio Supreme Court has affirmed residents can comply with municipal code requirements to shovel their driveways without assuming liability to others who may require to shovel their sidewalks without assuming liability to others who may slip and fall. The only time a resident may become liable is when they permit or create an accumulation of snow that requires a personal injury to another. So what that means is if you don't shovel it, you don't clean it, you don't pick up the limbs, you, you don't fix the, the uneven cracks, and someone falls, and you show that, that you've not tried to fix it, then you could be liable for that person's injury. The, 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 probably the most important piece to all this is, please, just be a good neighbor. Do your part in helping film residents and visitors, especially the elders and those with disabilities, because they have a hard time navigating through the winter. Today, on my way to work, there was four people, shoulder to shoulder, going down Canal Street. Fitch comes in, he later tells me, he catches people walking right down the center lane of Canal Street. He had to stop his vehicle and say, listen, this road could be slick, and my truck could lose traction, and I could hit you. You need to get up on the sidewalk. These people can't walk on the sidewalk because there's ice and snow. And then we've got these folks that are complaining about other city services, calling here telling me that I need to be in violation. And complaining about our streets when, if you just go into other towns, our streets look better than some of the other town, neighboring towns. But they're always deflecting the issue when it comes to code. They want to deflect it onto something else and make it another issue. When the bottom line is just do your help, do your part helping your neighbor. And that's all I have to say.
Well said, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Barber.
You're welcome.
Also, a great opportunity for someone to make some money if they have snow shovels. Get out there tomorrow and knock on, on some doors, or shovel the sidewalk. I used to have people come around my house all the time, and I would pay them, I have nephews that do it now, but I haven't had anybody come around for the last two years.
Yeah, those people that used to do it are not complaining on Facebook. But they have to shovel their own sidewalk, I mean, it's really sad. Like, we do have some teenagers that's been going around.
Yeah, I think school's already canceled for tomorrow, so you want to earn some money for spring break, there's somebody, get out and shovel.
I'm gonna belabor the point a little bit more. Have you, uh, have Mary's Court seen a ticket for trash cans or snow shoveling?
No.
Okay, so oddly enough, the two posts that we've created the most havoc in my tenure here has been trash cans and shoveling snow. I wish people put that much energy into all the other stuff that we do in the city. My God, just shovel the snow and put your trash can away, it's really not that difficult. Those are two of the most simple tasks that we do in the city. I don't even understand why it's such a big deal, but people sure do put a lot of effort into complaining and whining about it. Um, so, uh, I'm gonna. But anyway, yeah, just, just, just do it, just, just do it. And, uh, that's all I got, Mr. President, and we don't write tickets for that stuff, no. Um, it's there in case you really want to make a big deal about it, um, but we don't write tickets for that stuff, just fix it, that's all.
But I will.
But I think we should, we have the right to write tickets for it.
And we will.
We're getting to a point where that's gonna be necessary.
Correct, correct, then I guess that's what I'm saying, we don't write tickets for that, but we will if you force us. If you push us into that corner to write a ticket, you clearly made that happen, okay?
The flyers that I handed you guys, I'm gonna take around to some of the businesses tomorrow. Um, and this flyer's gonna be sent out by email to around eight hundred people. I have emails, uh, landlords, tenants. But yes, it's expensive, but it's important.
So, so since you mentioned, so since you mentioned, uh, businesses and such, anything? Cleaning up your sidewalk, by the way, just does not mean just snow removal. I mean, we're talking all year long, I'm talking about trash, I'm talking about, you know, debris.
Any high weeds.
A- anything in front of your building, your property, that's in the sidewalk, that's potentially, you know, unappealing to the eye, in my opinion, that's your responsibility if it's your sidewalk, so.
Not parking your car in your driveway, blocking the sidewalk is a good, I know somebody does that.
Not putting tables out for the.
Yeah, yeah, without a permit.
Yeah, that's blocking probably right away.
Doors in the back door, that's a brutal.
That is a, that is a, that's a, that's a good, I like. It just goes back to what Mr. Clemens said last week about everybody just taking a little time, if we all put a little energy into the city, we'll be a wonderful city.
Oh, yeah, and respect, respect, respecting yourself and others. I just don't, I did not understand that so many people are lacking until I became the code enforcement officer for the city of Nelsonville. Three, almost four years now, three years.
Trash can.
Four years.
Yeah.
It doesn't make sense to me, because I live out in the country, and I do all of those things. That aren't required of me.
Well, I think, I think you get out what you put into, I think this is already a wonderful city to live in personally. Now, I'm not originally from here, but I'm here from the side of the pride, so, um, but I, I think you get out of, uh, what you put in, so.
I'm sorry, I'm from here.
No, I took you and you, Greg, Mr. Clemens not, Corey's not, was this not, I'm not, sure Sherman isn't.
I, as, just to end this conversation, so we can get moving on, but Becky does not make the codes, she enforces them. So they have been on the books for years, and it's just her job to enforce it, so, Ms. Barber, thank you for your work. Okay, let's go to second reading, uh, ordinance zero-one-dash-two-two.
An ordinance creating the new position titled Nelsonville City Criminal Prosecutor and authorizing city manager Scott Frank to enter into a contract with a Nelsonville criminal, Nelsonville City Criminal Prosecutor and declaring emergency.
Okay, um, any council discussion on this matter?
That's all, Mr. Is it, uh, Bill?
John.
Was he supposed to come?
He came last.
Oh, okay, I wasn't there.
Oh, yeah, you're here.
I was here, I just wanted to make sure, okay? Any council discussion on this matter?
This, this doesn't change the cost of the, the, taken out of mine, just like they did before.
Move it to a dump.
Mr. Dumphy?
Yes.
Sherman?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes.
With Matt?
Yes. Yes.
Um, yes.
Okay, ordinance.
I'm sorry, my answer is a question.
Go ahead.
On the agenda, it just distinctly says like four-twenty-one instead of four-twenty-two, pretty important. Do we need to make an amendment to amend the, uh, it's right on the, it's on the agenda.
That's the twenty-one, that is twenty-two on the agenda.
That's fine, make it twenty-two, big motion of that.
So, okay, so, Mr. Dumphy, can I make a motion to amend ordinance?
We're not amending it though, it's right.
Well, we have to amend it on the agenda though.
Just amend the agenda.
We're amending the agenda.
Yes.
To amend the agenda.
Yep.
So then it's ordinance four-twenty-two, five-twenty-two, six-twenty-two, seven-twenty-two, and that's it.
Okay. So moved.
Somebody, yeah.
A second there. Uh, your finger might totally go straight there.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clemens?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
All righty. Yes, ma'am. All right, ordinance four-dash-twenty-two, need someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance establishing guideline for unclaimed funds to declare an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has numerous uncapped checks dating back to two thousand and eleven. Whereas the city desired to clean up the book by properly placing these unclaimed checks into an unclaimed fund account. Whereas the city desired to establish guidelines and policy and that the city auditor may follow in order to properly account for said funds. Now therefore, be it ordained by the council of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. This ordinance hereby establishes guidelines and policy to operate in conjunction with O R C one-sixty-nine. That money is due from the city of Nelsonville, and checks that have expired shall be placed in the fund number one-ten, unclaimed money fund, and shall remain there according to law and O R C one-sixty-nine. Nobody claims said funds after the holding period, then shall be transferred to fund number one-hundred general fund and serve with a attached exhibit A. The city auditor shall have an authority to follow the guidelines and policy described in section one and attached as exhibit A unless such guidelines in whole or in part are not specifically authorized under O R C one-sixty-nine. This ordinance being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to O R C seven-thirty-one-point-thirty, the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary for proper bookkeeping of unclaimed funds. Following appropriate legislative act, action. It shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage and approval. Otherwise, it shall take effect and be in full force from the earliest period of law by law. duly enacted by council on second reading of fourth P E C in February two thousand and twenty-two.
All right.
All right, um, we're moving on to ordinance five-dash-twenty-two, someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing city manager, city law director, the auditor to undertake any actions necessary to bring the former Betty Johnson trust money over the books, onto the books and to use that money for general expenses. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has left a large sum of money for municipal purposes. from the Betty J. Johnson Trust. Whereas the city of Nelsonville needs to bring said money onto the books in order to use them for general expenses. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. City Manager, City Law Director, and City Auditor of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, shall be granted the authority to take all actions necessary in accordance with the law to bring the monies from the Betty J. Johnson Trust onto the city's books so said money can be used for general expenses and municipal purposes. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect that they are early and limited by law. duly enacted by council on second reading of 14th February, 2022.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Or if you have things to...
I, I guess my only question here is, we say general expenses. I thought before that we talked about bringing this money in and putting it into a special account. For the use for special projects, not to kind of go into the general fund? That's my only question.
The, well, to, Bob can jump in. Right now, the way, or we have to go through a whole lot of steps even before we can even bring it here. So, my understanding is this is just to get the ball rolling, get Bob commissioned to go after. So, this is, we're far from even bringing it into the city. This is just to get it going so he can do what he needs to do to, uh, file suit and all the steps he's got to take even. It could be years before we can get that.
Okay, I understand. I just, I guess my thing is like, I want to make sure that we...
Yes, I do remember that.
Use the money strategically and not just dump it into the general fund to be used, you know.
Amen. Agreed.
For a valve.
Yep. We can buy lots of valves. I like valves.
Valves are good.
Valves are nice.
Valves are good.
Security system. Okay. All right, ordinance 06-22. Need someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending ordinance 5518 after hours call-out fee positions. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has the typographical error in ordinance 5512 relating to the after-hours call-out fee of $150. Whereas the after-hours call-out fee in Chapter 5.03.10 should not be limited to shut-off or turn-on as the fee is applicable to any call-out after regular business hours. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. Chapter 5.03.10, fees of the Nelsonville City Code as amended in ordinance 5518 shall hereby be amended to read as follows. After-hours call-out fee, $150, instead of reading after-hours shut-off or turn-on. The remainder of ordinance 5518 shall remain in full force and effect. An ordinance 5518 reads that it is specifically for shut-off or turn-on. The purpose of this ordinance is to amend Chapter 5.03.10 to apply a $150 fee for any after-hours call-out for whatever reason. This ordinance is being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to ORC 731.30 because the immediate passage of the ordinance is necessary for compensation for the water department services after our services. Following, following appropriate legislative act, it shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage and approval. Otherwise, it shall take effect at the full force from the earliest period allowed by law. duly enacted by council on second reading of 14th February, 2022.
Sorry, Mr. Troy? Should that whole emergency clause be struck? Because we're having it on a second reading, not on...
We're not suspending the rules.
Or, and because it's a utility, we can't pass it under emergency?
I wouldn't wait.
Yeah, we're not, we're not suspending.
Wait a minute, do we need to...
You can strike the language.
Start it, so for next time, we can strike that whole character.
Yeah, correct, yeah. So, uh... I learned a very humble lesson on this. Exactly. So, we get called out for...
Yes.
Uh, people who want their meters checked at night, who think they have leaks at night, who, of course, want their water turned on or off at night. And there's a whole variety of reasons why we get called after hours. Basically, the $150 fee covers the three-hour call-out for our guys. Call-out, so, whatever regular hours. Anything, I believe it's in there, if not, it's in one of the other codes. Anything after 3 o'clock counts as a call-out. So, and then, of course, on the weekends as well. But, um, we had a customer call because they had low water pressure in their sink. And we actually have a memo back there that just says after-hours call-outs and timeframe and everything else. So, we assessed the $150 fee to their account. And when they called in, actually, they wrote a really nice letter. And when they wrote the really nice letter, they put in there that the charter says to turn water on and off only. And so, I took the, I acknowledged that they were correct. And I took the $150 fee off because the charter does say, or the code rather says, um, turn on or off. And the memo that we have hanging on the wall back there was immediately taken down and shredded. And then we contacted Bob for an amendment. And now, they would fix all as well, all as well. So, we took that from customers, though. Want to be pregnant. That was wrong, and we fixed it. Okay, that's all we do. That's all we can do. All right. I would like ordinance 07-22. I need someone to introduce it, please.
Thank you.
An ordinance amending the 2022 temporary appropriations ordinance to appropriate from the unappropriated balance to the following. The sum of $6,000 from the unappropriated balance of the capital improvement fund number 600 to line item number 600-150-40090, public square upgrade and declaring an emergency. Whereas the appropriations need to be amended to appropriate monies from the unappropriated balance of the capital improvement fund number 600 to line item number 600-150-80090, public square upgrade. Whereas the appropriation is required for the addition of a 480-volt electric to power the electric vehicle charging stations. Now, therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. The 2022 appropriations ordinance is amended to appropriate from the unappropriated balance of the capital improvement fund number 600 to line item number 600-150-80090, public square upgrade to the following. The sum of $6,000 from the unappropriated balance of the capital improvement fund number 600 to line item number 600-150-80090, public square upgrade. The total appropriation, appropriated balance is decreased by said amount. So, appropriation to any capital fund improvement number 600, line item, line item number 600-150-80090, public square upgrades are increased by said amount. This ordinance being passed as an emergency measure as is necessary to complete the electric vehicle charging stations project in the public square in a timely manner and it shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules 24th day of January, 2022.
All right, any council discussion on this matter? Everybody knows what this is for. Okay. Go ahead. It's just the, the polo ad in the 480 in the same spot. All the equipment is in, and they should break ground either later this week or the first part of next week. And, uh, should have it all in, and everything is on track to be done by the end of February, which is our deadline with AEP.
We have great plans to publicize the lab station there.
Yeah, once we get it there. Oh, and yes, Dan, so I also, for utility, they've already sent me a draft of the rates, so you'll have to, for utility, you guys will have to set the rates, um, for that, and then we'll run that through council. Will we set up that meeting? I don't think we're going to be ready that soon just on, because they sent me a preliminary email. But, uh, I mean, there's really not a whole lot of options. It's kind of more, you know, more than anything, AEP sets it, but, so. All right, uh, any council, any more council discussion on this matter? Motion to suspend.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clemm?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes. Motion to adopt. Sorry.
Mr. Booth?
Yes.
Mr. Clemm?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes. All right. Someone to introduce, uh, ordinance 8-22. Someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it.
Thank you.
An ordinance extending a $3,000 pass-through donation from the Bear Foundation to upgrade the cameras at the public square and thanking the Bear Foundation for their generosity and authorizing City Auditor to pay for the camera upgrades with the pass-through fund. Whereas the Bear Foundation donated a pass-through $3,000 donation to the city of Nelsonville for camera upgrades on the public square. Whereas the city would like to accept the pass-through donation from the Bear Foundation and express sincere gratitude for their thoughtfulness, kindness, and generosity. Whereas the city desires to authorize City Auditor office to pay for the camera upgrades for the public square from the $3,000 pass-through donation. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. That the city of Nelsonville accepts the generous $3,000 donation from the Bear Foundation for the camera upgrade on the public square. The city auditor shall have the authority to pay for the camera upgrades for the public square from the $3,000 pass-through donation from the Bear Foundation. The clerk of council is required to send a copy of this ordinance to the Bear Foundation. The city of Nelsonville expresses their sincere gratitude for the Bear Foundation's great compliment, kindness, and generosity. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on second reading of 24th day of January, 2022.
Don't want to that, right?
Okay, uh, Mr. Barber, we're going to need you to look at his computer. See what he was downloading.
To be honest, that was something for Mr. Cohen notes.
I did not need to do that. We don't need to know.
Thanks.
Anyway, uh, order. Okay. Uh, we're moving on to ordinance 9-22. Need someone to introduce it, please.
Be easy on your neck, bud.
2022 appropriations ordinance will make appropriations for current expenditures and other expenditures of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, for the 2022 year and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city needs permanent appropriations budget ordinance for the year 2022. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. That to provide for the current expenditures of the city of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, for the 2022 year, the following sum be and are hereby set aside and appropriated as described and attached as Exhibit A. That in accordance with Exhibit A attached hereto and incorporated herein by reference, the sums of $22,506,105 is appropriated. This ordinance being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to the Nelsonville City Charter, Article 4, Section 4.09 through 4.11, as it is necessary for the current appropriations of the city, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules 24th day of January, 2022.
All right. Any council discussion on this matter? Okay, uh, motion to suspend. Okay.
Mr. Clemm?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Booth?
Yes. Motion to adopt. Someone. Thank you.
Right.
Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes.
Mr. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Booth? Mr. Clemm?
Yes. All right. Moving on. Last one, so, last one. I know. Turned out to them. That was a citizen's ear. She's like, that's wonderful. So, I like it with that special part of the church lady. Okay.
Bless your heart.
Yeah, there it is. Uh, ordinance 10-22. Need someone to introduce it, please.
I'll introduce it. Thank you.
An ordinance authorizing City Manager Scott Frank to approve and enter into the extension amendment for the city of Nelsonville Nature Works Project, number ATH-026, declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Nelsonville has granted a nature works project, number ATH-026, grant a couple of years ago. Whereas the extension amendment needs to enter, needs entered into and approved by the city. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the City of Nelsonville, Athens County, Ohio, as follows. That City Manager Scott Frank shall have the authority to enter to and approve the extension amendment for Nature Works Project, number ATH-026, that's attached in Exhibit A. City Manager shall have the authority to take all steps necessary to enter into and approve the extension amendment for Nature Works Project, number ATH-026. This ordinance being passed as an emergency measure pursuant to Article 4, Section 4.09 through 4.11 as an emergency in the operation of the city government, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption. duly enacted by council on first reading under suspension of the rules 24th day of January, 2022.
All right. Any council discussion on this matter? So, this is why it's been sitting there for a couple of years. So, this is the money that Cory Taylor has been telling me exists since I started that I have not been able to find. And a random email came out of nowhere, uh, last week. And I called him, which was great. And luckily, because of COVID and everything else, they're giving us a pass, and we can still use that money. Now, we have to contribute, um, I don't remember this. So, it's like 23 grand.
Yep.
And we have to contribute roughly, uh, 8,000.
Yep.
And, uh, so I called him up between the projects that we already did with the community improvement. You know, we already did a lot of the stuff that was on the list. But basically, we can buy the playground equipment still for Polyfield. And, uh, you know, so we got to get some fresh quotes and everything else. But, uh, we can still buy that nice playground equipment for down there. And, um, I have a rep coming to see this, coming to see us later this week. And, uh, luckily, for you guys did direct split a while back. We have money to do it, so there's not, I mean, it's already appropriated and everything else. So, I just needed you folks to give me approval to sign the extension. And we're going to get some playground equipment, so.
So, this is an annual grant. That's eligible, we're eligible for every year. It's a competitive grant. It's divided out to all the counties in Ohio. Obviously, it's per capita, so, you know, Hamilton, Franklin, uh, Kuyahoga get a lot, most of the money. Athens County, it's kind of going down over the years. So, yeah, I think at one point, we might have got something from 26,000. So, at the higher point, Athens got it a couple of times. We've gotten probably majority of the time over the last decade, we've gotten the money. But we can apply for it every year, so. Doesn't hurt to apply.
Yeah.
And it's not a...
Yeah.
It, it's, and it's not a hard application compared to some. You know, this is like a one-page kind of application.
That's great. Other than the match, is there any kind of restrictions on what we have to spend it on? Basically, nature and recreation.
Well, with this one, because it's already been approved and everything else, we have to stick... Uh, so, in the original plan, it was Polyfield and lighting and cleaning up the pool area, which Jason had already done, you know, unbeknownst. And, uh, the lighting and everything else, so.
Yeah, our, our match, by the way, can be in kind also.
Correct.
And it has to be completely monetary.
The way it's getting bigger with more money. Yeah, I couldn't find anything on it, so.
I do remember that. That was a long time ago.
So, it worked out. Oh, I just, you know, full transparency. We are going to take a point hit when we do it again. He, when I talked to the program manager with us being down here, and it's, it's really not that competitive for Athens County. He goes, you're going to take a five-point hit, which, uh, with COVID and everything else, is really miniscule. He goes, if I were doing your shoes, I would take the money in the five-point hit all day long. Because he goes, I don't think it's going to have any impact on you really at all. So, uh, take the guaranteed money, take the hit, keep on trucking. So, uh, take the guaranteed money, take the hit, keep on trucking. So. And it's actually time to fill it out now. So, uh, I think I'm jumping a little bit ahead, but, uh, now's the time to, uh, as council to start advertising for the dog park committee. Cause now would actually be the time to submit for that, because next year, um, would be the time. Next year is when the sewer plant will be going and that money will be available.
I'd suggest, uh, in the Parks and Rec Committee, um, and maybe discussion about the rec board. And then also the, uh, dog park committee. There should be things that I think that, you know, we should, uh, reach out to people in the community, get involved with.
Yeah, absolutely. I know a handful of people that are interested in the dog one for certain. Sounds good. Sorry, this will. No, you're all good. You're all right.
Do I need to make a motion to suspend?
Yes.
Motion to suspend. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Booth.
Yes.
Mr. Clement.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
I'm sorry, yeah, Mr. Booth. Mr. Clement.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yeah.
I've been called worse. True. That is true. Heard it a bunch of. Okay. All done with those. All right, the city managers report, Mr. Frank, where's yours?
Sweet. I don't have a whole lot, but I do have some good stuff. I've been, I've been mingling it in throughout. So Chief Fitch is still recovering from COVID, so he's at his house, which is not in Nelsonville. But, um, he, uh. They had a big bust up on St. John Street. It's a very well-known, uh, problem house, uh, for those who know about it at the end. Um, they got five males and one female. Uh, they recovered a stolen four-wheeler, a bunch of stolen bicycles, heroin, fentanyl, meth. It was, uh. Old gamut, you know, it was, uh, it was a well-executed search warrant, so it was, it was a good bust. So, um.
The city of Nelsonville Police Department executed this, correct?
Yes, yeah, we do our own search warrants now. Pretty good at it. They're pretty good at it, I should say. I don't, I don't do that stuff. Um, they're really good at that. And, um, even though they, little funny joke, the people that we took in, they said their lawyer, Bob Toy, said we couldn't do that.
Not gonna do that.
That's what they said. We have our second controversy aside from snow shovels.
Oh my God.
Uh, a lot of people got their water bills today. Uh, four, four hundred new accounts were added. They were all book bill accounts. So four hundred accounts were added, uh, with new meters to the billing system.
Okay. They hadn't been paying for water.
No, 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 no.
Okay, I was like, yeah, I see the problem.
No, 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 no.
So it's gonna be a big one.
So four hundred new meters were installed. They were installed a couple of months back, but they were now being billed through the new system. And, uh, a lot of people got billed for water that they actually use this time and they're extremely unhappy. They got big bills. Now, I will tell you that, uh, something through the software, we don't know how it happened, why it happened. Um, but on their bill, it's saying they got billed for seventy-one days. So far, every single account that they've looked at, even though it says they've been billed for seventy-one days, that's not true. They were billed for their normal billing cycle. However, we're still investigating every single person that calls and complains. And if we do find someone that was actually billed for seventy-one days instead of the normal billing cycle, we will address that and we'll fix it. But a lot of people who have high water bills and they're very unhappy about that. And I understand Nelsonville folks, we've already had quite a few Nelsonville folks have that happen to them. We still have about six hundred more Nelsonville folks that are, still need to be added. So we will still have more unhappy customers to come.
Good question about the billing of both the water. Are they built the same way as Nelsonville with sewer now also? So it's water and sewage for them?
Yeah. So it's just their rates.
Are one and a half times, correct?
Well, well, they are, but you know, even, even that, so on the Nelsonville side. So for example, the house for my daughter that, uh, uh, we just turned on a few months back, you know? It was reading zero. Now it was just her in there. So instead of putting a new, uh, several hundred dollar new meter in there, she hasn't, she was one of the first ones to get one of the new meters, you know, so she's still getting a minimum bill. But had that been a full family, you know, in there, that would, would have went from a minimum bill to several hundred dollars, you know? And so a lot of people are in that situation for where they were getting minimum bill and now their bills a couple hundred dollars. They're very unhappy with that change. And, uh, so that's, that's, uh, shocking a lot of folks with the use of water. Yeah, and, uh, you know, and I think a lot of you are familiar as well. Um, in the past, you know, we've had disputes with folks, uh, that they're very upset that they think their water meter's, uh, broken. We try to explain to them ad nauseam that when water meters break, it's to their advantage. Cause when a water meter breaks, it stops moving, and that's when they get minimum bills. Uh, sometimes they're very adamant that that's not the case, so then we send it away. And the agreement is that, uh, when we send it away, if it's bad, we'll pay for the test. If it's good, they pay for the tests. I haven't paid for a test yet. And, uh, we just got back four more tests today. And, um, that'll be the last that that happens, cause with the new meters, they, uh, I mean, it's pretty hard to dispute, cause you'll get a daily water bill. And it'll show you by the hour how much water you use, clear down to, uh, I forget how low we have a program. Uh, you can go much lower, uh, denomination, but, uh, right now it's pretty low. Basically, you'll be able to see where it's turned off, you know, and if you have drops in the middle of the night, it will pick up those drops. So, and that's how it detect leaks. Once we get everybody online and we get all the bugs worked out, we'll be able to get everybody access. And it'll be up to them if they want it or not, but you will have access, especially landlords, um, to all your accounts, so you'll be able to see the usage. Uh, they'll be able to log onto the computer. I'm told there'll be an app. I, I don't know if the app will be, uh, if you're a landlord, I don't know how well the app will work out with having multiples. But, uh, you'll definitely have a login and you'll be able to see all that. So, uh, you'll get notifications as well. We already get notifications immediately, so if you have, uh, usage for so many hours, especially in the middle of the night, you know, the, like a running toilet where it runs every so often, we get notifications, we call you right away. So the notification process is immediate versus, uh, after we get your reading once a month and so forth, or, you know? Right.
I had a water meter turned on today and I got a call. You know, okay, your, your water's running still. Just turn your meter on and it was running, but it was filling up our water tank and, and toilet. So, which you wouldn't normally have that much usage, you know, like in when you're first starting out on a water meter, so. It was pretty cool to get that call.
Yes. Yeah, and, and then you'll have that as well.
They thought it was a leak. They thought it was a leak, cause.
Yeah, because it pings that error. And, uh, so yeah, that's the level of detail we have, but there is a lot of unhappy people, so I would suspect all of you will be getting calls from people booked right now, cause we just uploaded those four to the software last week.
How did meters without account for some of the big percentage loss we have coming out of water, Clay?
I, I suspect we will. Okay, yes, so. Michael Benz, our engineer, I had him send us. So Logan just did this two years ago, where they went in. And he said, uh, Logan was barely getting by with their water fund. And two years later, they now have over a million dollars in their water fund just by changing it out. He didn't give me the percentage that they reduced their water loss. But as you guys know, um, just a year ago, we were at fifty-five percent water loss. Uh, we've dropped down to forty-five percent, uh, till the pools all opened. Um, and I believe I've shared with you that we have that narrowed down to, we believe is broken, uh, water supply lines versus an actual leak in the, uh, fire liner.
That's a great thing.
And, uh, I'm not saying the liner's not leaking, but we do know the supply lines are leaking. That's also.
But the, the, the meters, though, is really only helps us, really helps us, uh, detect leaks, though. Once it passes through the meter, though, right? So it's still, we're still having, we still have some water leakage on our lines.
Absolutely.
We have to find.
Yes. But it's gonna help with our water loss report, because now we're actually capturing all the water
that's running through.
That's running through, you know, so for example, my daughter's meter, you know, the thousand gallons that she uses will now actually be accounted for versus unaccounted for before. And you know, that's times however many meters. Well, not all four hundred, it's, well, you can go around Facebook, there's.
Sorry, you hit Facebook.
There's, there's more of them than there are angry shovel people, I can tell you that.
We have twenty-five phone calls decked in our office.
Yeah. So, um, so be on the lookout, you guys will get calls on that. Uh, this Friday, um, the representative from the governor's office, Mr. John Carey, who represents this area, is coming to meet with myself and I invited, uh, Michael Benz to be there as well. He contacted me and he wants to meet about our projects that the city needs to have done. I can only assume that that is a result of the House Bill one six eight money that we did not get from the state. So, um, I have a strategy and, uh, Michael Benz is a part of that to wind up all of our problems. Waterlines, all of them. Waterlines, sewer lines, stormwater. You know, those are. Three is all water. Yeah, so those are, I mean, that's what the infrastructure budgets, you know, they're. It's not covering asphalt, so.
But then we'll have to, but then we'll have to follow up.
Fix the lines. Yeah. So. Yeah, so Mr. Benz and I, uh, last week we met, we came up with a strategy. Uh, Benz is coming, he's getting all the information together. And, uh, we'll have our meeting Friday and, uh, we'll go from there. Sounds great. And, uh, unless you folks have anything for me, that's all I have for you.
I'm good. Anyway. All right. Thank you, Mr. Frank. Let's start off with the good of the order. Uh, we're gonna start off with Mr. Sherman. We have the floor. Go ahead.
Are you open to the city manager?
Thank you. A very, very important one. Mr., uh, sorry, Chief Barber, um, I'm surprised you didn't throw a dart at me. Chief Barber, uh, has recommended, uh, three folks to be, uh, hired on part-time at the fire department. He has recommended the three, all in three candidates, they've all met the, uh, actually they surpassed the minimum qualification, they passed a physical agility course, they passed a written civil service examination. And, uh, the first one is Mr. Holden Purdy.
Okay, I make a motion to hire Mr. Holden Purdy part-time as per the chief's recommendations and Mr. Frank's recommendations. Good evidence. Second.
Mr. Sherman.
Yes.
Mr. Booth. Mr. Clement.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Yes.
Second one is Jonathan Ray Weisman.
Okay, I make a motion to hire Jonathan Ray Weisman as a part-time firefighter as per chief and Mr. Frank's recommendation. Yes.
Mr. Clement.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy.
Yes. Yes.
And I apologize that I said his last name by reaching you. Yeah, that's what I'm.
John Ellis Grzynko.
Uh, make a motion to hire Mr. John Ellis Grzynko as a part-time firefighter as per the chief and Mr. Frank's recommendation. Second.
Uh, Mr. Clement.
Yes.
Mr. Taylor.
Yes.
Ms. Jones. Yeah, Mr. Duffy.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Booth.
Mr. Lashley. Everybody's a lot of Grzynko, G R.
G R I Z.
Yeah. G R I Z. Thank you. Mr. Sherman. Do you have the order?
Mr. Sherman, do you have the order?
I love it.
Come on, go. Anything, Sherman? Oh, really? Are you sure?
Thank you.
Mr. Booth.
I just wanna wish everyone a safe, uh, travel home this evening and, uh, yeah.
You like the new chair there, Mr. Booth? You're all around there. You're looking, you're looking quite round there.
Thank you.
Um, Mr. Clement, please.
I don't have anything.
You don't have anything?
Nope.
All right. Mr. Taylor.
Well.
Here we go.
Oh, boy.
Oh, here we go. Oh, here we go. Start off with this.
I might get in trouble for this.
No, 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 no.
And there it is. And there it is. No, I, I wanna just, you know, thank, um, you know, our city employees. The weather's been, you know, difficult, um, and, and it's, and I know even with those shoveling their sidewalks, uh, as good citizens that they, as they are, um, it's, it's tough to go out there shovel and then, uh, two hours later, it's, it's all covered up again. So I appreciate our, our guys out there, um, you know, continually salting and, and, uh, snow plowing. I do appreciate that. Um, and I appreciate all the work effort of those in the community that are helping to try to keep their neighbors and their neighborhood safe, so. Um, and also I, uh, wanted to, uh, congratulate my son. He's, we're taking him to the airport tomorrow, usually for boot camp, so, uh, I'm, I'm excited, so, yeah. So it'll be, be a rough, uh, couple of months for, uh, for our family. My wife's devastated, so if anybody wants to send food, you're more than welcome, you know?
I send food overseas.
We, we go down in March, so hopefully our flights have changed like three times already for those, so hopefully we can still get together in March, so. That's all.
Ms. Jones.
Uh, so, um, first, Cory, best of luck. And just remind people again, you know, to stay safe and healthy. And since we've been sitting here, we have gone to level two, um, for the roads, so crawl with us. Be safe driving home.
Thank God I got a service.
Yeah, I think school's canceled for tomorrow. All right.
All right.
Yeah.
So it's canceled.
Very, very little school happening around here.
Right. Very little. All right, thank you, Ms. Jones. Um, I would like to, uh, just express my deepest sympathies to the family of Gary Weiser. Mr. Weiser passed here, I believe, last week. I had an opportunity to meet him and speak to him on several occasions. I used to move the yard across from his and we'd have some pretty long conversations. He was a great man, a very nice man, and sorry for his loss, for their loss of him. Um, I'd also just like to remember and to remind everyone that, uh, be safe out there, you know, COVID is real. Well, perhaps you don't think it is until it strikes your family member. And I have been struck, so. And also like to express the thankfulness to all the city employees and the great job they're doing with snow removal. The roads were clear. Um, I was in Columbus, the roads weren't clear. So it's pretty amazing for a little town to have better roads cleared off than a big city, so. Thank you to all of that. Mr. Frank has asked for an executive session, a very quick one for, to discuss personnel legal matters under High Revised Code one twenty-one dash twenty-two. And the time is eight twenty-nine. We're inviting, we're inviting in, um, Mr. Frank. And Bob. Mr. Toy. Okay. It's ready out. It'll be very quick.